We will call this regular session of the Carmel Clay School Board Meeting to order. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. President, Leda Spanberger is not here tonight due to a Boy's Gone National Training in West Virginia.
Thank you. All other board members are present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Katie Browning.
(Pleading) Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have public comment. We do have a couple of young people that have requested to speak this evening. I am just going to quickly go over the rules and then we'll ask you to go to the podium. The school board recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to speak regarding corporation matters. However, the primary purpose of the meeting is to conduct corporate business and public comment will be limited. When you go to the podium, please state your name and address when you start your comments. You have three minutes. The green light will come on when your time begins, the yellow light when you have 30 seconds, and the red light when your time is up. I understand we have Max and Remy who would like to speak this evening.
Well, I'm Sarah Abdallah. I live at 10515 Green Tree Drive in Carmel. This is my son, Max Abdallah, and one of his best friends, Remy Goldstein, and they're going to talk to you today about their opinions about the length of recess. Max had done an opinion paper about that at the end of last school year, and I said we should bring that to the people that get to make the decision, especially with the time of day study that's going on. We thought it'd be important for you to hear from the people that it affects, so.
Go ahead, guys.
How long do you think we need for recess?
Well, we think we need at least 30 minutes.
The American Heart Association says you need at least 30 minutes, or 60 minutes of exercise a day.
15 minutes is not cut it, but 30 minutes is double what we get now.
We have more energy than we have to burn, but what we don't have any time to burn that extra energy.
There is not enough time because we are always waiting in line for other kids.
We don't get very far in games like football. The score is 14 to 7.
Some kids get annoyed during the day and forget and need to fidget.
We hope you agree that we need more time for recess.
Thank you very much, Max and Remy and Sarah, for coming. We appreciate your comments. Next, we will move to approval of consent. The consent report contains personnel report, claims, payroll, approval of gifts that include a gift to Smokey Row, some gifts for the C4 Conference, approval of handling obsolete equipment that will be donated to net literacy, and minutes of executive session from June 10th, workshop from June 10th, regular session from June 24th, workshop from June 26th, and executive session from June 26th. Can I have a motion to approve consent, please? Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? No, there being no discussion, all in favor of approving consent, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? No. Thank you. Motion carries. We do, on the consent, have a special guest here this evening. I will turn it over to Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. So at the July 10th meeting, you approved the recommendation to hire Mrs. Stephanie Fairchild. Mrs. Fairchild is our new Director of Special Services, and today was her first day, so I asked her to have an extra-long day and come to the board meeting to be introduced to all of you. Mrs. Fairchild, previously, prior to coming to Carmel Clay Schools, was an Assistant Director in Warren Township, and she also worked in Lawrence Township as an early childhood specialist, as well as she worked as a resource teacher, as well as a teacher of the deaf and hard of hearing. And so we're so excited to have Mrs. Fairchild join our team, and I want to introduce her and ask her if she'd like to say a few words.
Sure. Can you go first? Sure. Dr. Bearisford, President Kirschner, members of the board, I'd really like to thank you for this opportunity. And you know, it's kind of ironic because two weeks ago, I stood at this podium for my interview. I was asked to give a presentation, sit through an interview, and then do an hour performance assessment, and then it's like moved so quickly. So two weeks later, it's my first day of work, and I'm honored to be here. This is a great district that prides itself on excellence, and so far, I have seen that all the way to the very top with Dr. Bearisford and Dr. Dudley, and I'm just thrilled to be here. And as you said, I worked in Warren Township, and as I was speaking with Mr. Kirschner, it is a little benefit, a little perk, that I get an hour and a half to two hours of my day back that I'm not commuting, so I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie, and welcome to Carmel Clay Schools. Next, we will move to the action item. The first item on the agenda is the bid award for the new elementary school at Clay Center Road Early Site Package. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This bid is recommended to Millennium Contractors in the amount of $2,498,750. This was the lowest and most responsible bid that we received, with a total of three bidders responding. We had invited 14 bidders, and so we are making this recommendation. It includes, it is the site, some grade site work at the Clay Center location for the anticipated new elementary school. Also will include water service, piping, sanitary and storm sewer piping, and natural gas services. So the funding for this is coming, this portion of that school was anticipated in the general obligation bonds of 2019 that we sold fairly recently. Responding questions that you might have.
Thank you. Before questions, can I have a motion to approve action item bid award for the new elementary school at Clay Center Road Early Site Package, please?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions for the board? Or for Mr. McMichael?
Yes. I just have one. Will this site work include the preparation for the baseball fields?
Yes.
And then the retention pond and everything?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Katie.
When would this work start?
Soon, I would say, you know, once we award the contract, they'll mobilize and start the project rather than immediately, probably within a matter of a couple of weeks.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. There being no further questions, we will now vote. All in favor of approving the action item for the site work at the new elementary school? Please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? No. Thank you. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a recommendation on the Carmel Clay School 2021-2022 school calendar. Again, Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This proposed calendar was presented to the board at a previous meeting, and as you know, we had a calendar committee that consisted of parents, teachers, and administrators, and so we're recommending this calendar for the, what is it, 2021-22 school year. So this will add another year to the two that we already have.
Thank you. Since we talked about this at the last meeting, do we have any questions from the board?
Motion.
Yes, we need a motion. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the proposed 2021-2022 school calendar?
So moved.
Lynn? Thank you.
I'll second.
Second, Katie. Thank you. Now any discussion? Go ahead, Katie.
I just have a question more about the process. So is this going to be, we're going to do a rolling three years? Is that kind of what we decided?
Yes.
So every year, we'll add another year?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? No. All in favor of approving the recommended school calendar for the 21-2022 school year? Please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the action item is material rental and fee changes for 2019-2020. Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. So this evening, I bring to you the material rental and fee changes for the 1920 school year. Some of these changes are due to new adoption, such as in wellness. Other changes are changes with material costs throughout the year, or some where some consumable materials may have been deleted or changed, and there's some slight changes there as well.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the recommendation on the material rental and fee changes for 2019-2020, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Pam. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. Any questions from the board? Katie, go ahead.
Is this, can you refresh me? Is this the one where we talked about where they're starting to add things such as like the polos and those types of things into the fees?
Correct. So last year, for our sixth grade performing arts, we added that last year to the fees, and then this next, coming up next year, we'll be looking at seventh and eighth grade performing arts as well. But we're trying to get as much like their music and things into the fees and not pay throughout the year.
As a parent, I say thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? No. All in favor of approving the recommendation on material rental and fee changes for 2019-2020? Please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? No. Thank you. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is adoption of policy 0210 Staff Ethics. Again, Dr. Dudley.
So this policy I brought to you, I'm bringing to you this evening for a second reading. This is a policy that we're looking to adopt that will combine some other policies that we will be looking to delete, but it's looking at staff ethics. And then we also added a piece on social media at the end of this policy, and this entire policy was reviewed by our attorneys.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the policy 0210 on staff ethics, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Dudley? This is the second reading. Okay. Thank you. All in favor of approving the changes to the policy on staff ethics? Please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? No. Thank you. Motion carries. We will continue again with Dr. Dudley on the adoption, well, the adoption and deletion of policy 0100 Communications, Cooperation, and Support.
Yes, and so this, the recommendation is to delete this policy and then add the information to the administrative guidelines to policy 0210, the staff ethics policy that you just adopted.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt the deletion of policy 0100 Communications, Cooperation, and Support?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? There being none? All in favor of approving the adoption of deletion of policy 0100 Communications, Cooperation, and Support? Please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? No. Thank you. Motion carries. We will next move to the adoption, deletion of policy 0231 on outside activities of staff. One more for Dr. Dudley.
And so this policy, again, this is a recommendation to delete the policy of outside activities of staff and add the information to the administrative guidelines to our staff ethics policy of 0210.
Thank you. Once again, may I have a motion to adopt the deletion of policy 0231 Outside Activities of Staff?
So moved.
Thank you, Lynn. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Dudley? No. Thank you. We will now vote. All in favor of the adoption of deletion of policy 0231 Outside Activities of Staff? Please signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you. Motion carry, any opposed? None. Thank you. Motion carries. And we have one more policy on the agenda for this evening. It's the adoption of policy 7230 on gifts, grants, and bequests. Again, this is before us on second reading. Dr. Dudley.
Yes, and so there's a slight change in this policy where we're combining the gifts, grants, and bequests to just gifts for the policy, and this policy was also reviewed by our attorneys.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt policy 7230 on gifts, grants, and bequests? I guess now just gifts?
So moved.
Thank you, Lynn. A second?
Second.
Katie? Thank you. All in favor of adopting policy 7230 on gifts? Please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Now we will move to discussion. The first item on discussion is the first reading of policy 2500 Teacher Appreciation Grants. We know that this is a policy we must adopt every year, and I will turn it over to Dr. Dudley.
Yes, and as Mr. Kirschner mentioned, this is a policy that the board does need to adopt each year by September 13th for this year, and it is stating that the board will distribute the 2019 Teacher Appreciation Grants within 20 days of receipt, of receiving them from the Indiana Department of Education, and this is for teachers that are rated effective and highly effective, and the difference between the stipend is that it'll have to be at least 25% more for highly effective as effective, and that's per Indiana Code.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Do we have any questions for Dr. Dudley on this report?
So from reading, so it's just a date change? There's no other changes being made?
That is correct.
We're just updating it for this year?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Was that your question, Pam?
No.
Nope. Oh, you didn't have a question? Okay. You're just nodding? Okay. All right. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we move to reports. The first report is on design, is a design development presentation on the new elementary schools. I will turn it over to Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. Previously, the board was presented with the schematic designs, which is the first step in the process of construction project. This is the second phase where now at design development, there's more detail in the project, and I'm going to ask the representatives from CSO Architect to give the presentation to the board.
Good evening, Drs. Bearisford, Mr. Kirschner, and ladies and gentlemen of the board. It's a pleasure to be with you again this evening to bring you this update. We're excited about kind of the direction we've been going and the progress we've made, so hopefully you'll like what you see. Overall, looking back at the schedule of kind of where we are in this process, last, as Mr. McMichael mentioned, last time we came, we were at about schematic design level, which is kind of early on, as we've kind of established a footprint. That footprint's continued to refine itself as we've met with the leadership team, and now we're finishing up the phase that we call design development and moving into construction documents. So that just means to say, all the concepts and ideas and discussions we've had with your administrative team is now becoming the actual kit of parts and drawings and details that will actually create the building and end product. So both sites are on a little bit of a different schedule. As you guys heard mentioned earlier, there is an early site package at Clay Center Road that's getting ready to start, so that one's progressing a little bit faster than the one at Carmel Elementary. Site work will commence hopefully in the next month. Foundations and structural steel will then start going out October into the end of 2019, and then the rest of the building and site improvements will start in the beginning of 2020 and into route through May 2021. We'll move in in May 2021 and open the building for the 2021-2022 school year. Carmel Elementary is running a little bit slower, the replacement there, so this will not be, this project won't have early bid release packages. We're going to package everything into one, bid it at one time, and do it all at once. So the bidding for that will happen at the end of the year, December of 2019. We'll start construction in January. The new building will be complete in May of 2021, which, and at that point, we'll have to demolish the existing building and complete the rest of the site work, so this schedule does carry on a little bit further as we have to take care of the existing facility and then put some infrastructure on top of that. So this will wrap up October 2021, but this building will still be open and operational for the 2021-22 school year, just like the site at Clay Center Road. The building footprint should look very familiar. It really is more of an evolution of what you saw last time than a complete change, so I'll walk through some highlights here as we do it, but the overall concept, again, is very similar. The kind of public spaces are in the center of the building, and then those blue boxes you see are classrooms, and they're circulated around a central activity commons, and there's one for each grade level, so it'll be divided up that way. Starting at the kind of main entry and center of the building, at the top of the screen, you'll see the secure vestibule, so that's the secure main entry point. During the day, all other doors are locked. All visitors and parents have to come through that door and be let into. I believe we're exploring and beta testing a type of scan-your-ID-before-you-even-get-in-the-building system, so we're hopeful we'll be able to implement that as part of this. We continue to work with the principals and staff with the admin office layout of trying to create something that's going to be functional as well as allow for flexibility in the future as specialists might be added or office admin might be added, so how can we flex back and forth and provide space but not provide too much space? So I think we've got a really nice layout here, and then created, on the south side of that office area, there you see the clinic. This has kind of become the student services area, so there's guidance counselors, the clinics there, and it has its kind of own entry, which the staff really liked because it didn't require students to go into the admin area or feel like they were going where they might get in trouble. It was, it's just a different area for them to approach. Moving south on the page, you've got the Discovery Center, which is kind of the evolution of the Media Center. There is a small maker space there with some overhead glass garage doors that'll open up so that that space can feel really open and engaging to the corridors around it and allow students to kind of filter in and out. To the bottom, you'll see the large group instruction space. This is one of the spaces that gets used a lot in your existing facilities, and it was very important to everyone that it was still included in a new building. Then you'll see art and music kind of flank there on each side of the main hallway, and that'll take us over to the gymnasium cafeteria and kitchen area. You see the stage off of the gymnasium and then the cafeteria to the left of the gymnasium with the operable wall partition between the two, so this is a very similar setup to your other elementary schools. The functionality of this works really well for most of your current facilities, and so we wanted to maintain that while improving on some other aspects of it. To the north and south of the cafeteria, there are more overhead garage doors that are glass, so on a nice day, we can open those up and let kids go outside, get some fresh air, get some daylight, and that outdoor patio to the north is fenced, so it is secure, but just a nice opportunity to bring the outside in and let kids go outside. We've worked with the food service department here at Carmel Clay Schools and developed the kitchen layout, so I think it's working very well. It's got two lines, and the principals all seem very excited about just the ease and functionality of that. Moving forward to just kind of the typical classroom pods or learning neighborhoods, the main corridor would run across, in this image, across the top, and so you would have maybe first and second grade in each of these pods. So there are five classrooms around a central activity space, and then there is, we actually had a lot of conversations about cubbies, believe it or not. We spend a lot of time there of trying to figure out what's the most functional and reasonable and best place for those, and kind of started on this solution where the coats are between the classrooms, so coming in, students would come down, they'd drop their coats off, and they go into their classrooms. There's also this additional wall of glass and doors that open up out into the activity commons, so that should a teacher want to expand and let her kids kind of work in small groups, she can kind of open up those doors and just kind of free-flow in and out. It's a really nice feature. We've implemented these in several other facilities differently. This is a very cost-effective way, we believe, to do this, to provide that supervision through glass as well as access without going to an operable wall or something of that nature, which starts to be fairly costly. So we feel like this is a really innovative and cost-effective way to achieve the same functional goals that all the administrators and teachers wanted without spending a lot of money to do so. Between the two activity commons, there's a shared outdoor learning lab. Those courtyards are still a little undefined right now. We're just thinking there might be some paved surfaces, and then we'll let the kids, over time, decide what they want to build out there, whether there's raised planter boxes or something like that, but trying to keep landscape and things that have to be maintained to a minimum, just because a lot of times those courtyards become big maintenance issues over the long term. You will notice that each learning commons or each learning pod has four single-user restrooms, so we did single-user restrooms instead of gang restrooms or group restrooms. That's kind of a change and a shift of, as we start talking about privacy and, you know, issues and horsing around and getting group restrooms with small kids and supervision. This allows teachers to be able to send students one at a time instead of disrupting a whole class to go, and so it's just kind of a different philosophy and thinking about how restrooms are. If you can trust your students to go by themselves and you can keep an eye on them while they're going, it doesn't have to disrupt the entire class. Moving to site plans, so we've been working a lot with this, but this, the Clay Center Road is pretty similar to what you've seen in the past. We have had another community meeting since we last met with the surrounding property owners to get input and show them how we'd addressed many of their concerns. So we did, most of those concerns were from adjacent landowners to the north and to the east of the site, and we have pulled the, pretty much the whole building and parking lot area about an additional 50 feet south and created some landscape buffer and an additional birmingham of about six foot tall on that north property line to help screen those neighbors to the north from our property. They were all very happy that we had done that and were very concerned about being that close, and I think we satisfied a lot of their concerns. The detention area you see to the southeast is, will be fenced. That was a major concern for homeowners on that side of the, adjacent to that property, not wanting kids to be able to get into there and, you know, if something bad happened. There's also the new low dock field you see here, our four baseball fields. We've been working with Carmel Dad's Club and the administrative team here to kind of figure out what those look like. Right now, it's just a envision, just if we picked up the four fields at Carmel Elementary and dropped them over on Clay Center Road, that's essentially what we're doing. We have been working with the city through this, and I think we've come to some amenable decisions on some things. We have added a pedestrian connection to the neighborhood to the east as well as to the north. They were really wanting that interconnectivity for students to be able to access the site, so I think we've done a nice job there. In terms of the site circulation, it's very similar to what we showed you last time. Buses will enter on the South Drive and then come in and park along the rear of the building and dismiss, and then come back out. Service vehicles will use that same drive. Those will be obviously scheduled so that they're not at the same time. And then parents and staff will all use the north entry and exit, so there will be no mixing of cars and buses during any time of day. Parents will come in and then stack around the loop around the parking lot, so there's a significant amount of stacking to keep traffic off Clay Center Road. That was a concern of neighbors as well as the city, just because the current thoroughfare plan doesn't have Clay Center Road being expanded to a larger thoroughfare street. It's supposed to be a rural in-character, so the more we can pull off the street, the less concern there is about traffic on Clay Center Road, so we think this has done that very well. Just zooming in a little bit closer, I guess you can see better. We also, you can see the playground, open glass, open grass areas. At Clay Center Road, because we do have the space and the early childhood program will be here, there is a kindergarten playground or a smaller playground there to the north, and that's just because for kids that small, it's nice to have the smaller equipment and to keep them separated from some of the older kids. At Carmel Elementary, we don't have that luxury just because we're a bit more constrained for space. Looking at Carmel Elementary, you'll see that this is significantly different than what we showed you last time. This process has continued to be fairly fluid, and there's been a lot of input from local neighbors as well as the city, and there's a lot of people interested in what's going to happen here, so we've been trying to work with, within that and with a lot of that input, and it has been a challenge with the given site constraints. So this is still very much a work in progress and definitely not the final version of what this will be, but currently, the proposal shows But currently, the proposal shows the new building at a 45-degree angle. You can see that blue outline there is where the existing building sits now. It's closest point, we're about 13 feet away, so we're pretty close. Our partners over at Skolman assure us that it can be done, so we're hopeful that this works. There is some conversation. There's a sanitary sewer line that crosses this site. We're working with the city and the local utility company to see how that's going to work, because we're most likely going to have to relocate that line to get the building to fit on this site. Again, trying to keep buses and cars separated as a safety priority. Parents and staff will use the existing entrance on the north side of the building. North is turned in this image, but towards the library. So they would come in and they kind of circulate around and then up to the front of the building. Again, trying to create that stacking distance for parents to be able to stack and not come out onto the main traffic. Bus loading is on the south side of the building. Currently exploring options of connecting connections to the south, to Lexington. Also have been exploring and looking at options going east. Again, like I said, it's still kind of fluid as we kind of develop that and look through for different options and try to figure out what's best and what's safest for this site. Being a landlocked site, it does create some challenges in terms of trying to get better circulation. And then, as I mentioned, the playground and grass play area are kind of up there on the north side of the site. There'll most likely be some type of underground detention. As many of you know, the library to the north of this site is also getting ready to undergo a project, so we are looking for ways that we can collaborate with them and maybe do some cost-sharing on certain items that we, you know, we may be able to, may be mutually beneficial. So we're hopeful that something fruitful will come out of that relationship. Yeah, I think that's about it. So the exciting part for us is when we start to look at what the building's going to look like. Well, not the only exciting part, but it starts to become more real. So we're excited to be able to show you some preliminary renderings. These will change by the end of the project, but just to give you an idea of where we're headed. So this is kind of an aerial view of the whole school. This is modeled on the Clay Center Road site. So the main entry is kind of right there in the center, and then the parent drop-off drive comes all the way along the front of the building. So we move forward, this is kind of the front elevation, so as you're coming up to the front of the building, what you would see to the right, you see the gym and cafeteria, lots of windows to bring in natural lighting in there. And then in the center of the building is the main entry, nice and prominent so that everyone knows, hey, that's where I go in. There's no question when you pull up to the building about where you're supposed to enter. And then the three wings you kind of see there, one's the admin and the next two are the academic wings coming around. So that's just a close-up of the main entry point. As I mentioned, the gym and cafeteria are there behind, but just a really nice entry. In terms of materials, we're looking at masonry and a little bit of manufactured stone, trying to maintain the quality and expectation of all the other Carmel schools that we see as well as the surrounding neighborhoods and materials that they're using. Coming a little bit further north on this site, you can see the gym in the background, and these are the academic, one-story academic wings. Coming around the backside of the school, so this is kind of on the edge of the bus parking lot, looking towards the school, so you'll see basically two academic wings. The gym is kind of further in the background and the courtyard's between. This is a typical courtyard view, so what you would see between the two grade levels, as I mentioned, there'd be a fence there to keep kids safe. And then we're, right now, we're thinking it's mostly paved just from a maintenance perspective, but there'd be opportunity for kids, again, to build raised planter beds or to do some activities out there and different things like that. So like I said, these renderings are subject to change and very preliminary, so this definitely will not be the final product, but it gives you an idea of kind of the look of the building and our expectations. So with that, I'll turn it over for input or questions, comments.
Well, thank you. As you've said, this is very exciting for us as a board in the district. And it was interesting to see the Indy Star article today about Hamilton Southeastern Schools and things that we're considering as well. I also want to take this opportunity to thank you for meeting with our concerned citizens. I had the privilege of attending the last meeting, and I think it's very helpful for them to get input and for us to be able to come back and show that we've addressed some of their concerns. And with that, I know that there are plenty of questions from the board, so we'll start at Pam, with Pam, thank you.
Okay. My first question, and I know I didn't ask this prior to the meeting, but can you just go over all of the exits in the building?
Sure.
Okay, so I'm concerned more like about the cafeteria, how the students are going to exit if they need to exit from their classrooms, where do they go out? So just go through those, please.
Sure. So I guess let's start in the cafeteria. So the cafeteria you'll see has basically doors in every corner that go out. So there's doors to the north and then doors to the south. So as exiting the cafeteria, you would come south and then out that main corridor, or you'd come directly out through that outdoor patio and then out into the, there are gates on those doors. They would be locked from the outside, but they'd have panic hardware, which is what's required for any path of egress per code, so that they would be able to still exit should they have to. We can also put alarms on those so that students can't leave should they just want to.
Right.
The gym, similar way. You see that there's two doors kind of here on the north side and then a pair of doors down here, and then another pair of doors here. We do have to run, we run, it's an egress calculation and occupant load where we determine what's the maximum occupancy of that room, and then it dictates how many doors and how much exit width is provided, so we do calculate that to ensure that there is enough. And with the cafeteria gym being a combined space, we actually have to calculate it as one large space, which increases that requirement even further. So we're confident that there are enough doors out of those spaces to get kids out. Looking at the classrooms, the academic pods are, and they're kind of compartmentalized on purpose. So you'll see there's a main door towards the main corridor, and then there's also an egress out through the, through a vestibule that would lead you out of the school. And that's for a couple of reasons, but, so there's two ways out. These doors will be tied into the security system, so in a lockdown system, they could, they can shut. But there's also the opportunity for kids to exit, so if the problem's not in their area, they can get out of the building. And that's just kind of security guidelines as well as just kind of practicality with code issues, so there's always two ways of exiting. Most of the other spaces would utilize kind of this main corridor, like your large group instruction, Discovery Center, et cetera. So there are doors on each end of this main corridor as well as down here in the center of that main corridor. So we have to, code requires us to have an exit within 250 feet of anywhere in the building, so that requirement is more than satisfied and actually easier to satisfy in a one-story building.
Okay, thank you. And if there was, because we're always worried about safety and safety doesn't always happen with people who enter the building, but tornado-wise, there's a lot of glass in your rooms, so where do the students go? Or would they go if there was a tornado?
Sure. And we get that question a lot now that there is a lot more glass in education design, and we kind of respond to that two ways. Is, one is we'll designate what those safest places are in the building so that we know where they're supposed to go. There's usually signage that's included. Additionally, that glass is a laminated glass. It's like a security glass, so should it get hit with something, it's not going to break and fall out of its frame, it's going to stay in. It's tested up to, I think, well, depending on the grade, like three and a half to seven and a half minutes, so if somebody could basically stand there with a baseball bat at that glass and it's not going to fall out.
Okay, okay, that's good, thanks. Also, the LGI, I know in some of our other buildings, we've had to use the LGI for classrooms, so will that be set up in such a way that it could be separated or blocked off if you needed to use it as a classroom?
So short answer is yes. Currently, we aren't planning for like an operable wall partition in that space. However, we did, when we discussed technology requirements for that space, it was, well, hey, if we have to come back and split this up into two classrooms because we need space, let's make sure we have technology provisions in place to do so versus having one projector on the wrong wall. We'll have one projector facing away from each other so that can happen.
Good, okay. Let's see, and you said something about relocating the sewer line around Carmel Elementary. Where is the sewer line currently?
So it currently runs, oop, too far, east to west. So it kind of comes through that 50 feet of property the school district currently owns into that neighborhood and cuts across the site kind of at a southwestern direction. Originally, we were trying to keep the building behind
Behind?
That line, so we wouldn't have to even consider relocating it, but as we've worked with the city, that's become more of a complication to try to do that.
I think we ought to note that in recognizing our really positive relationship that we have with the city, that when this initially came up with staff members with the city, there was a question about, well, you know, and staying within the setback, we could do that with this design by angling the building, and in the end, we think this is the best layout anyhow. But there is the issue of the sewer line, and estimates now are between $300,000 to $500,000. And so we received information back, we met, Dr. Beersford and I met with the mayor and members of his staff first after a phone call to him and said, you know, we'd like to talk about this. And so within two or three days, there was a meeting called, and so we met with them. And so today, we were informed that the city will cover the cost of moving that sewer line.
That was my next question.
I think we ought to get recognition for that.
Okay, good.
And then the second issue on Clay Center, initially, there was a possibility that there would be a road that would go through the property. You can see this stub road that was originally put in with the development. And so there again, it was about a half a million dollars for the road if that was required. And it would also result in pushing the building back up north toward the northern neighbors. And so again, after those conversations, the determination by the city was is it wouldn't be necessary to put the road through. So we're very appreciative of that, and again, it reflects the positive working relationship that we have with the mayor and with the members of the staff with the city.
Well, that's very good. I'm glad to hear that. I would also like to know what's going on with Fourth Avenue or Fourth Street.
Well, that's what started the conversation with, at the Carmel Elementary site, in that the master plan for the city, through Faribault, they call it, does show Fourth Avenue going, you know, on the west side of our property. And so in anticipation of that possibility, the city requested, I think it was a 60-foot easement, which is what then, with the original layout, the building wouldn't fit without encroaching on that easement. So that ultimately resulted in this design of putting it at a diagonal, but it also required putting it on top of the existing, or, you know, encroaching on the current sewer line, which required then movement of the sewer line. So that's what dominoed into the need to move the sewer line.
So is there a reason why they need to do Fourth Street all the way through?
Well, simply that that's, they think that's, you know, the layout, ultimately in terms of the traffic and it's just, you know, potential, it's planning for the future. And again, that, there's no determined time as to when, or even I suppose if, that will go through. But it is in the master plan for the city and has been since early 2000s.
So it'll go across the bottom of that picture?
Yes.
That map over there?
Yes.
And then it'll go into the neighborhood and over to 126th Street?
Yeah, ultimately, it would, the vision, it would connect, yes, to 126th Street.
Okay, thank you.
So back to the, I'm going, I'll start here and I'll go backward because we're already here. So for, I know that there's been some current concerns, and you guys have been working about where to put the buses. Can you let me know about how many buses we have that would go to the elementary school every day?
I think we've anticipated 10 to 12.
Twice, and then they would come twice a day?
Yes.
And then are we still looking, I know it was talked about earlier, about shutting down with like an arm or whatnot, that service entrance?
Yes.
Okay, so then it wouldn't be used by anybody else any other time?
That's correct.
Okay, and then obviously, my other question was, is the city involved? And you just answered that. So would these, whatever entrance there is used, would these then be a priority for city engineering as far as like, I mean, the street department as far as paving, et cetera? Would the street get priority? I mean, these are some side streets, so would they get priority so that our buses can get through?
Well, the buses are in there, we run buses in there every day now.
Oh, I guess that's true.
So that's, that, I mean, I don't know that that would be an issue anymore than it is now.
Okay, good point.
Street department's amazing here.
They are really good.
Yeah.
Okay, so then backwards a little bit to the renderings of the outside buildings. This is just a comment, it's a lot of brown. So that's all, just brown.
Says Miss Browning.
Says Miss Browning. It's a lot of brown. Okay, and then back to the inside pictures. I have a question about the stage. I know this is, is this to scale? It just looks like a very big stage space and besides if there's a presentation going on, and you guys can probably also tell me too, what is the stage used for when there's not some, a production?
So I don't know the square footage of that off the top of my head. I know it's comparable to your other facilities. That's kind of what we based all of our initial square footage is from. During the school day, I think it would probably operate much like your other facilities. I don't know that there's a huge use for it right now. We did, there is a kind of a secondary opening in the back of the stage that opens up to the Discovery Center, which should allow for some more informal use of that space. Kids can gather there if the media specialist wants to get, gather the whole class up and sit here and give them instructions before they're dismissed out, things like that. But there's really no formal programmatic function that's been assigned to that space.
And then following up to that.
Just to piggyback on that, we really tried to work a lot of flexibility, a lot of flexible spaces. So you see with like the garage door that opens on the Discovery goes right into that and then it's raised, so you could, you could have a little play there, you could have, your kids could give a speech there. There's just a lot of activity that can happen, you know, with visual fields being a little different. And so we're kind of excited about all the different pieces that are just open spaces that we can play with, and kids and teachers and staff can be very creative with it.
And I think too, I know that sometimes, like where my kids go to school, ESC uses that stage space for storage and everything too. So, okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Lynn, I guess Lynn, before you go, the question I have, the stage is set up that it can be used from both sides, right? So it's not a deep like production stage, it's, you know, just for, I mean, musicals and things are done there, but we don't have an orchestra or band or?
Yeah, it's maybe. No, it's very similar to this, like if, you know, the most, like Prairie Grace and Sound Meadow and so forth, except the double access is different, and we think is a much more flexible use of the space.
Thank you, Lynn.
Yeah, can you go back one slide? Yes. So I understand that you have outdoor, share the outdoor learning lab between two grades? So just looking on the southeast cluster, where you have an extra classroom on top of the learning lab, it's FAP classroom. What's that classroom for?
That's for the special ed classroom. We didn't define which special ed program would be put at each building. We tried to create space that would accommodate any special ed program, but that's what that classroom would be utilized for.
And there's no, there's no, another one on the other side, on the north?
Correct, there's only one.
Southwest, there's only one, okay. Is that the only place for a special ed program?
Yeah.
I see, thank you.
Pam?
I have one more question, sorry, I forgot to ask this. When you're, when you are loading or unloading in the loading zone up there, can you explain the security that will be up in that area?
Sure, so this door would be locked and most likely have a doorbell or an Aphone-type buzzer system, so that there's a small office down here for the custodian as well as the kitchen, what do you call that, kitchen person? I'm not sure what that staff name is. So that a delivery driver would come, they'd ring that doorbell or that buzzer, and it would notify one of them that, hey, there's somebody at the door, and they would have to come and physically let them into the building to take that delivery. And they would have to come and physically let them into the building to take that delivery.
Okay.
I would point out that if there's nobody there, that usually they go to the front, they'll go to the front door to get somebody that comes to the back door a minute. So if not just three access, they'd have to get somebody to let them in.
Yeah, but, I mean, they just have to ring the doorbell and you go and it's just like when you open your front doors, you know, you never know who's there, right?
Except that there are security cameras all the way outside.
Thank you, Katie?
Kind of piggybacking is similar, but the courtyards are one of my favorite parts, but on the renderings, those fences look like they're three feet tall.
Yeah, I think they are four feet and we've had that discussion that they probably need to be six, at least, so that they're a little taller.
All right, and then are you thinking like iron, are you thinking like privacy or what kind of, what's your thought process right now?
Right now, we're thinking like an ornamental kind of iron look fence just from, just so it looks nice and doesn't look like a, you know, a prison or a, obviously, there will be budget considerations as we do this. The other fencing that we're using is like a black vinyl coated chain link, so it still looks nice, but it's not quite as nice as an ornamental would be.
All right, thank you for the six feet.
Mr. Woodward is on that because it looks like a trip hazard in the drawing here. They're not going to trip those bad guys, but it's going to be substantial.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I just have a couple of questions and I think I know the answer. This is the perfect, right there, the slide. I was first going to ask why we need the pavement going in, but I think the answer to that question is it's an emergency exit going out.
Correct.
Okay, and then I can, trying to think what the word is, understand the concern about the Cubbies, just when we went on the walkthrough for one of the schools, I know that that is a big concern to have enough space for books and backpacks and coats, but not be a monstrosity. So I'm glad to hear that there was a lot of thought put into that process. I guess if there's no other questions, thank you for coming.
Our pleasure to be here.
And we will move on to the next item on the.
Before we jump out, I just wanted to throw a little shout out to some folks because the people that, first off, CSO did a great job facilitating the design of these buildings and I couldn't be more pleased with, you know, what's come out of them. And then also the, we had principals and Mr. Ferrin back there and Roger and Amy and really, it was a real team effort to make this a building that would facilitate curriculum, that, you know, was about learning spaces, not just about, you know, building traditional space. And it's really an inspirational space that is really forward thinking about where education's going in the future. And so, you know, it was really just a really great process with, and I couldn't be proud of our staff and their input they put in it and kept wrestling, even with the Cubbies, it kind of drove me nuts. But they did end up with a great, great solution to that. It really is, I think, a space that'll encourage a lot of innovation, it'll encourage creativity. There's going to be a lot of hands-on spaces, there's going to be a lot of outside opportunities and laboratory type things. And I just couldn't be more pleased with the, you know, the design of this building. And this is, you know, the colors and all that kind of stuff yet to be determined exactly. So these are just renderings, but I think the spaces are pretty incredible. And I just want to throw a little thank you out to everybody involved. It really, really has turned out above expectations on my side. Thank you.
Thank you again. Next on the agenda is the monthly financial update. Mr. McMichael?
Thank you. So we're through June 30th and this is the end of our fiscal year. And we're really right on target with what our projections were. You see there in our education referendum funds, we ended with a cash balance of 8.6 million and that's within about $50,000 of a year ago. And it won't always be that close, but it was, it's really right on what we projected. And you'll recall that I had shared with the board that we were running below that balance throughout the first six months and that's really driven primarily by the referendum and the fact that we received that essentially twice a year. And so the referendum, as it, as it increases over the years and becomes, you know, then there's just more dollars where we're waiting on that payment in June, May and June. And so that's reflected here by the time we get to June 30th. And same with our operations fund, you'll see it compares, it's very similar to last year's capital projects and transportation and bus replacement. That won't always be the case either, depending on the cash flow going out with construction projects and so forth. But this particular year, they're running pretty close together. So I'd respond to questions if you have them.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Roger?
Glad to see the property tax balance was backed up.
That's right.
I do have a question or two. You said that the money from the referendum increases. Can you explain how that happens?
Yes, our property tax is now controlled by a growth quotient. And so this upcoming year, for example, that will increase those levies by three and a half percent. And so the way that impacts our operating, or our educational fund is since over 95% of the expenses are for salary and benefits, which occur very regularly every two weeks for payroll. But that portion of the revenue only comes in primarily twice a year. And so, so as, as that dollar amount increases, we can, and our budget increases, then, then, we have a, you have a cash flow issue until you receive, you know, as you're spending the money very regularly every two weeks, but you're not receiving that revenue. And in our budget now, that's about $20 million a year. So as you go through the first six months until you get that tax draw, you know, your cash is going to go down and then it will come back up as we receive the property tax.
But so the percentage of the tax doesn't go up, what happens is the assessed value increases, so as the value of our community goes up, then we get more money?
Right, so still, it doesn't, the tax rate's 19 cents on the referendum, so that doesn't change. But with any, just with any taxes, if the value of your property goes up and you're, you know, you'll have the same, if you have the same, sometimes the rate will actually go down. Because in our debt service fund, for example, we need a certain dollar amount and so if the assessed value goes up, the rate necessary to raise that amount, the rate actually goes down. So the impact, this has no impact to the taxpayer other than the recognition that if you're, if the value of your property goes up, then even if the tax rate stays the same, you're going to pay more dollars. Kind of like, think of it as inflation, you know, if it's 2%, and, but your income and so forth, you know, if it's going up, if they're going up together, then it's, you know, one's offsetting the other.
So for example, the proposed safety referendum at 5%?
Five cents.
At five cents, correct, thank you. Five cents for $100 of assessed value. So for example, if the total assessed value today produces $5 million, over time, by the time we get to the end of the eighth year, that amount that it brings in could be higher, but it would also potentially adjust for salaries going up and all of those things. And that's why we look at our budget and our tax rate every year.
Yes, and so it's not quite that simple, but if you have 2% inflation and your income's going up 2%, your property values are going up 2%, and your taxes are going up 2%, then it all, comparatively, it stays the same over those eight years. But just like your house, eight years later, it may be worth, hopefully, it's worth more than, market value will be higher than what it is today, but so will every other piece of property. So you haven't, if you sell your house and want to buy one just like it, it'll cost you more money as well than what it would cost today. So they're not always exactly offsetting like that, but that's the concept.
Thank you. Any other questions? No, we will move on. Next is board member report, Lynn Carmel Parks.
Yeah, this month, I have one item to report. Recently, Clay Township Board approved a nearly 60 million impact program, which would build quite a few projects in the city and the town, in township. So included in the 30 million project, which mostly affects public parks, is a fiber optic ring for public entities, which includes our public schools. So that, my understanding is that that makes the communications in cases of emergencies safer and better. So I know that our school district will be in talks with the city and the township to discuss how the district may leverage the network for our district. So that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Lynn? No, thank you. Next on the agenda is superintendent's report, Dr. Beersford.
All right, it's been a really busy three weeks and so, but I've kind of cut down my report a little bit, but I wanted to start out talking about C4 because you may be getting tired of me talking about C4, but it is such an inspirational thing and almost half of our teachers attend that, at that conference in the summer. And I thought I'd show you the video that Courtney over there created for C4 so you can kind of get a flavor for what C4 was about this year.
Hi, my name is Mira. My grade is kindergarten and I am, and I am five and a half. Hi, my name is Aubrey and I'm eight years old.
Mira just finished kindergarten at Prairie Trace Elementary. She loves exploring outside, playing on her iPad and watching singer, dancer, YouTube sensation and big hair bow creator, JoJo Siwa. She will graduate from Carmel Clay Schools in the year 2032. Aubrey just finished second grade at Prairie Trace Elementary. She loves watching YouTube videos, baking and all things dogs. She will graduate from Carmel Clay Schools in 2030. Mira and Aubrey are part of our newest generation, Generation Alpha. It's the first generation to be wholly born in the 21st century, starting in the year 2010. There are 2.5 million Gen Alphas born globally each week and they will number 2 billion by the year 2025. When they were born, the iPad was introduced, Instagram was created and "app" was the word of the year. They have never known a world before internet, smartphones and augmented reality. They will be the most technologically literate generation thus far. So we shared some technologies of the past and present with Aubrey and Mira and asked them to tell us about how they might be used.
What does that say? That looks so weird. Twinkle, twinkle, little star, how I wonder what you are. Hello? I don't know. What? Maybe my mom has used it maybe before. Um, 1995?
Sounds old.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wait, is, is it maybe like a CD or something? A flexible disc? And a square shaped CD? Why is there a hole in the middle? What do you plug in there? Hi there, Mom! I totally know what those are. Chromebook, iPad.
What are you doing?
So, let me show you. So you would open it and on the screen would show up and you have to put your username and password. Just type in your username and password. Like you can play some games on it and you can, like, you can work with your teachers, there's Canvas, there's Google to help you search up stuff. I use this on Wednesdays for reading warmup because up top here, there's free online games and I like to do that.
As you probably know, members of Generation Alpha have always been connected to everything and everyone at all times. They are makers and gamers and prototypers. They care about authenticity and purpose and they have access to infinite content and resources with just a click of a button. Researchers tell us that Generation Alpha are expected to work longer hours and have an average of five careers in 20 different employers in their lifetime. Employment is predicted to be disrupted by automation and artificial intelligence. The careers that Aubrey and Mira will be entering will require the ability to think critically, be creative problem solvers and communicate clearly and quickly. Instead of asking Aubrey and Mira what they want to be when they grow up, we need to be asking, what problems do you want to solve? As they will likely be facing some of the biggest challenges of the world when they grow up. By the time the first members of Generation Alpha graduate in 2028, the world will look very different from the way it looks right now. So how will we, as educators of Mira and Aubrey and all of their friends, create learning experiences that will not only address the current learning needs of this generation, but will also prepare them for the unpredictable world that will exist for them when they leave our care into college and career? Our world wants go-getters, decision-makers, designers, creators and dreamers. In the words of educators John Spencer and A.J. Giuliani, "Our job is not to prepare students for something. Our job is to help students prepare themselves for anything."
Hi, my name is Mira.
So as you can see, a lot of times, I think sometimes people in the public wonder, what do teachers do and why do you go to these conferences and why do that? Because our learners change. The kids that are coming, rising up in our schools right now are coming from a background and a, and a skill set that's totally different from the learners we've had in the past. So teachers have to be agile, they have to be, you know, continuously learning, looking to new skills. And when we build spaces like that, it's to match, you know, these teaching techniques and these high interest things that we're going to do, strategies, so that, to engage the kids in learning and they have to be able to problem solve and react flexibly to a very complex world that they're in. So when you see, whenever I hear about, you know, 600 teachers attending a summer conference in the middle of July because they want to collaborate and work together on their skills so that they can bring their best to the, to the new learners that are coming in their classrooms, the rising kids, it's pretty, it's just a pretty awesome thing. And C4 is just one of the best, best we've ever seen. The keynote speaker was pretty much in line and we actually saw a movie, you know, it was a movie, a documentary on Friday night about High Tech High and how kids go there and they are able to build things and create things and solve problems. And that that's part of the learning process. No longer are we just trying to recite things and memorize things, but it's actually skill-based and working with a lot of collaboration, that sort of thing. So the whole thing all kind of fits together. It was, you know, when I was preparing for today, I thought, wow, you know, we have C4, we're working on our instruction to match it, and we're building buildings to, you know, to try to create flexible space to reinforce and support that kind of learning. And then our teachers are going to be ready. So anyhow, pretty exciting step. So I wanted to say, throw a shout out to C4, once again, I just think it's a great thing. And it's not just during C4, this room right here is full all summer long with professional developments going on. Today, there's a bunch of teachers in here learning about conferring and, you know, talking with their students about, you know, how they're learning and taking charge of their own learning, so it's pretty, pretty special. Also, I want to talk to you a little bit about, you know, our continued study of the time of day. You know, and the good news is, we had outstanding participation in parents and staff members giving input, you know, on the topics that we put out in the video. We had 1,767 secondary parents respond to, you know, to the feedback form, another 1,373 elementary parents. And a total of about 422 staff members. So our total response rate on that informational video and then giving feedback electronically was 3,562 total responses. That's the great news. The bad news is it's going to take a while to dig through that. It was not a survey, it was actual, you know, you know, text and responses. So we'll be putting those into categories and I'll have a report for you, but it may take a little bit longer, I guess. Also, another thing we had happen- another thing that happened just this last week was our new teacher orientation. So we had our first group of about somewhere between 30 and 40 new teachers that came in. And Dr. Stefanoff was leading the kind of induction program of that. And boy, we've got some great talent coming in. And a balance of like some new superstars coming around out of college and then some with a little more years of experience. And they're all mixing and matching and really fired up to be part of the Carmel Clay team. So excited about that. Probably the worst kept, worst kept secret in Carmel Clay Schools right now is the, the big reveal of the theme for this coming year, which, you know, it's just, it's been, it wasn't in the newspaper. So I guess it's out. So, but our new theme for this year is Carmel Clay Schools wants to be the best at getting better. And, and I really kind of stumbled upon that in talking to, to Bill Corley, who used to be the CEO of Community Hospitals and his wife was on the school board. And I talked to him last year and he shared that with me. You know, you want to be the best at getting better. And, and he'd gotten that quote from someone else and it really resonated with me because one of the things that I think we hear a lot in organizations, we want to be the best, we want to be the best. But best is, is often unless you have a pretty structured standard of what best is, it's kind of like whatever somebody thinks is best. And, because there's no strong set criteria that. And also I think that that idea of I want to be, we want to be the overall best is very competitive and it, it causes people to measure themselves against other people, which I don't always notice that's the healthiest way to go about trying to, you know, improve your organization, you know. And so I love the idea of being the best at getting better is because getting better may be different. The first year teachers that were in here, they're getting better. This year's going to be very different from the five-year veteran teacher who's got a, a skill set that's, that's different. And each building has a little different flavor. So getting better at different, you know, each building may need something different that they're really working on and want to get better at. So that whole notion of we want to be the best at getting better and the idea of continuous improvement, you know, at the, at the macro level and at the, at the micro level, you know, when that magic happens in the classroom. If we get all of our people are working on consistently improving their skills, then we don't have to worry about winning or losing because success is going to take care of itself. So anyhow, that's it for this year. You know, the T-shirts are getting printed. It's going to happen and I hope they're all spelled right. Another thing I wanted to bring to your attention was, you know, our last meeting, we had a special session where we passed a resolution to run a school safety referendum, a new opportunity that the legislature gave us. And we have gotten word back from the Department of Local Government Finance and they have approved our language. And so on November 5th, I'm going to read it to you. This is the question that's going to be on the ballot. "For the eight calendar years immediately following the holding of the referendum, should the school corporation impose a property tax that does not exceed five cents for, on each $100 of assessed valuation, and that is in addition to all other property taxes imposed by the school corporation for the purpose of funding the following in Carmel Clay Schools? The employment or compensation of school resource officers for all school buildings, programs that address youth-specific mental illness for all schools, so mental health supports, and professional development programs for teachers, administrators and other school employees designed to improve school safety and reduce violence." So that's what's actually going to appear on the ballot on November the 5th. And, and then our patrons will be able to vote yes or no. And just as a review, what will that cost individuals if your home's valued at $250,000? It's about $65.13 after homestead deductions and that sort of thing. $500,000 house at $146.38. $750,000 house, $232.88. So that's what's, what's on the, on the ballot and the process is moving forward. And it's kind of a step-by-step process and there'll be more information coming forward. But I wanted to have that factual information about where we are at this point in time. And finally, I got a bell ringer. And my bell ringer is going out to, to Ron Farron and his team of people because I got an update from Roger today. And you would not believe the number of summer projects that are going on right now. And, and this, this list right here, I went through and I won't go through all of it, but I was trying to count up how many schools are being touched this summer. And I don't think this list is actually all of them. So-
It's, it's not. I, Ron shared with me later that this only had the items that we, there's been interest expressed as to when they'll be complete. So there are more.
Yeah. So we're talking out of 15 schools. I think I counted 11 or 12 on this that are getting substantially completed. And Carmel High School's got more than one project going on there. And so kudos to Ron and his team with all these dishes spinning and building two elementary schools, all the improvements that are going along in the, you know, in our school community and all of our buildings being touched for safety, for upgrades, for, you know, maintenance. It's just a lot going on. So kudos to you, Ron, and, and your staff for, you know, keeping it going. And a lot of them are going to be done before school starts and a lot of them will be done shortly after school starts and, and they'll press through. But very, you know, high quality best practice. It's, it's getting done at Carmel Clay Schools. And that was my bell ringer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford. Thank you for sharing that introductory video from C4. It was the second time I've seen it and it just amazes me, 2032, we already have kids in school that will be graduating into a world that we have no idea what it's going to look like. Do we have any other questions for Dr. Beresford?
You may want to know that, and I hate to even say this out loud, but there's 16 school days, weekdays left before school starts. So summer, summer is closing down.
Well, that's, 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 that's the perfect segue to what I have, which is last on the agenda, upcoming events. Like I said, August 12th is Teacher Contract Day. August 13th is Students' First Day of School. I know at my house, nobody's looking forward to those days yet. August 14th, we have the School Board Workshop Session, which I believe is a Tuesday night. So it's not, oh, Wednesday, Wednesday. So it's not going to be the first day of school. August 26th is our regular workshop, no school for Labor Day. And then September 9th is the School Board Workshop Session. At this point, I will take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
To move.
In a second?
Second.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.